Twenty percent. There.
Okay.
Good. So we can get in on that.
Okay.
Uh. There's something really interesting and I don't know how. It's how you gotta get it figured out. I wish you. I did know it today the lady told me. I don't think anybody else knows it. The formula they're using. To decide how much taxes you pay. Ends up. The more, the cheaper house ends up actually five hundred dollars more in tax than the three hundred bucks. Well, it's no more. I have my own what you saw. It's all kind of all that up with that circle back around. Share that with me and that's the first I've heard of it.
Wow.
It's so research is a problem.
Yeah.
Such issue that uh we were gonna have to really dig into to figure out how that works out. David was suggesting a group meeting to get through there. And I just, you guys need to know, I told you that I'm saying somehow I have to get somehow better to always get all of what I'm getting. And very hopefully we can go ahead and. So memory is not considered reading. So information from project type.
All right, we're all secret chief, right?
Right, yeah. That computer there is about to die. That um. It's. You may know about it Travis. It's not.
No.
Picking up. The black magic design. We've got a work order in for him to come fix it. It's this thing. So if I plug in. The. This one to the guest PC, it'll. Okay. I think I got it figured out. It's just my other, now my other things went out. I think this driver, this thing that, you know, we signed the thing. I think it's finally, the drivers went out on video too. Uh, you might want to look at it if you have a chance to come up. Right. Nobody ever wants to say we're here with the clerk.
Hold it there. I want to see this.
Martin, if you want to speak tonight, it's about the topic that you found out. Who?
Yes. What you have.
Two, two.
I just thought you'd walk in by there.
Well, I'm having that video instead of the master one. Connect.
Okay.
Yeah.
I asked.
I'm all. I saw.
I don't know.
I didn't know that.
Only way you can have some fun. Yeah. They're long. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. We're on. That's why you're on. Oh, well, how is it the the thousand? Oh, so. Okay. One, one. That's the one that's on. It's kind of. You're sure. Working with operations. I still hear it's like that is. Yeah. In any room. They had a way maybe. Two seven. Two or three thousand. On that. What I thought is in the wild. You all have that. Make sure when I feel sounds. So I'll work. Inside here. Through. From. Cause they're near. I'm gonna leave that that's seamless. That that's. That's what I keep going. Believe that I'm farming. Most of the purpose I do. No, you can be like one.
Fred. Fred. I can buy them. The red pleasure. I forgot to put that memo behind you out there. It's red and blue.
What is it? They didn't. See uh. And. There's a plan. That's from. I will shoot. I wait. This. Oh. Now. So it's like. I think we want to. I start with. I'll show you. Here. Hey, it's very. House. I'll have it. So I just. Oh, I'm. Let's do it. We got some. He has. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. You the. Oh. It's. But. There is. I'm sorry. So I'm. Yeah. So. I get it. You're right. I'm. Yeah. So. They follow our. It's like. And. I'll find something. I forgot about. Like that is. About two. Well, it wasn't. I don't know. Guys. Yes. But. Yeah. But. No. I want to just. Do that. The guy. And I would learn somebody. File here. So we're talking. To the right. Yes. As a law, it's the other spot. We obviously all play. Was in the group. I didn't want. What we're giving down. Like. Well, it's over. I'll do it. It's right. It's not. All of the. I'm sharing. Same. For. Two, two. It's about. They all scum. That's all. I don't know. That's what. I was. There's something. That really was. I know I have. You. Probably. So. Cause I don't. I don't think. I'm. Yeah.
That is.
I have not. It's under the.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll get it. It's not. I'm against.
Hello. If we're. Sorry. This is. This. Time. Basically, it's. And I'll give you all these guys. Well, we've. Get ready to. And so. They. You are. Where else? All right. I'm doing. This. But. Have you been there? Yes. Oh. It's. So. Touch. If you don't. Okay. I don't. Can I? That's. Yeah. So. So. People. Of. Oh. It's. Um.
From the passage in the mission. And all thank you done in this be in order for your glory and this is your humble servant's prayer. Jesus Christ, amen.
And in the. That's all. I tell you to. To the. Maybe I can say something. To the product which stands for my base. I'm too proud. Need this for. Paper team. That's just the song. From the condition statement is to advance the framework for our success with non-stated partnerships and then engage community. That project. It's uh solid city and safe for us and God's team for diversity and unique education, droughts, sense of vulnerability, competitive society. Better. Uh, that's. At the time of the. Add item seven point three in the videos. Early in the morning, the men of the gender. There's also an additional item that's in alley. But the single hanging out. Uh, referencing temporary clothing of Kimball tree. And also ask. Is that coming in seven point seven? Uh, it's played before we're going to add this. In seven items, three point five or there's. Does it certain point four? Um, I would like to have a short discussion on the. Three point two. So if we commit three point two to revisit. Remember. First of nine. Start. Minute. On the. But uh. The commission of Brian. There's. Because that was. Thank you. Yes, sir. Well, on Saturday, yeah, I'll sack. And I hate. Um. Well. Nothing good. We could make the. Round closure seven point four. And fiber optic seven point five. Yeah. That's okay with everybody. Was that? So why it's coming in? I'll just hand it out. Uh. Make a motion to. A man. Uh, I'll make a motion that the agenda we amended and as you've been presenting it, also make a motion that the. Air in the. Ministry. Sure. The move about the second. And then we have. Minutes. Forty. All the. Look. I'm. Motion. Oh. I'll make a motion to the. Virginia. The move about the second that there's any. Oh. All the. They've been on last time. But. All votes had the same right. Very non motion. I'll make a motion to the. Men in concerned. But. The move about the second that the. I made a concern to him that he approved. All the. They were. Wow. Wow. All their posts had the same line. Very non motion acts. He's done this. Those. They. I know. Something that was from the. Problem. How? Thought that was first. Oh, we didn't have a lunch. We didn't have it. Easy to call station A and address. Well. I mean. What? Uh, mine is Martin. The forty one day crap below the style. Has two things that I want to do. As I told the board whenever it was proper. That's convenient. For building out of box. May y'all to see the need channel. May y'all the move simple. Another thing I want to talk about is I said something before about the twelve thousand square foot. Now. Childless. Nation. Our situation uh come to us. Thursday. Concerning the family. This is why I sleep when I was talking about it. Save us. Well, long story short, the. The male got locked up. What are we doing? The female got put into uh. Free help for the kids that left. Providing the parents. So the search term shot into it and I think we're gonna try to help the small ones. Cause the older one had a while that he has aged out. He can't. Well, that kid don't have. Don't have. Anyway, you know, he's just gotta put up with it. Uh, we need to consider. Not only what's coming. It's what's seen with you now. Right? And right now we need some counterfeits. That they should for those that don't. So I. I've been to some of my houses and I know they don't. I I most not even sell my key at dark system. So I know I've been doing this thirteen years. All I'm trying to do is try to anyway I can. It's why we're too old. Is try to stage some of these teenagers. To understand that when you go to college and when you go, that's a different world. And if we as adults. You know. So we're productive adults. We don't do that thing, then that's a, that's an entity that's missing in our family. Well, it's me or somebody else. But it needs to be administered as quickly as we can. Because that's how we move the mountain. And we send a kid to college. It ain't no child academy college. It ain't no South City college. It's hot. You got kids from. All over the world. It's been exposed to different things. We're sitting around understanding our book. But you gotta understand that book. That's a whole other book. Whole other language. Things are different. So I wish y'all would consider. Looking into going in with me on the twelve thousand square foot. When I've done the child person, I had engineers with it. Tell me that as long as I've done things at the top, the same as the bottom, didn't have to get no engineer and then because it was the same service. You understand what I'm trying? It I had to get a special use of. Yes, sir. This is basic. Are you, are you proposing a shelter or? I feel like I'm proposing a community service. With about two or three. Like I said, twelve thousand. Two or three conference rooms that you could have. Anytime like we need to meet or something like that, you can have that. Or soft walls that you could blow the walls out to make it bigger. Right? And have a sofa. Chicken plow or something done giveaways. You could do that there. You know, a lot of things. But uh big screen TVs and computers and stuff like that. So that the kids don't have. At least have access to. What's that? Uh, I see. Fourteen oh two. North Dogwood Avenue. Fourteen twenty two. I do. It's not a dogwood avenue. It's just on the corner of North Dogwood. Yes. But and it's their walking distance. Uh, the way they're gonna build out uh downtown South City, it would be. It right. And it's, and I'm in one of those buildings that's considered uh. The historical. So. Because that's I always want to kind of consider that. At the time.
Thank you. Follow up with that. On Saturdays, we know not Saturdays. This Tuesday. There was a lot of discussion about uh services and putting together some type of liquid. Just all the services that were not only in solid city and counting. And it kind of falls right in. Not going on worms. Understanding what Andrew you like. So uh, thank you. Those. For anything else on. I hope that comments. Well, I understand. But. Oh, this is. Oh. I assume this. What? Want to liberation. And we.
But. We can be. Um, the garden where. Um, we also will say that she. And represent the custodian. Uh, perfect. It's before. And we were. Very. Perkage. For me. Um. If you don't want to reach out to myself and uh, well, not really. And like minutes for us to put an agreement again that we're on. Yes, the title to the football to essentially take over running football on behalf of the county. It's all too. Um, and there is an agreement. That he drafted. So staff is working through to make sure that it aligns with community and family. Um. We also uh, in accordance with statute and the request and methodology is a agreement. It requested that the book existing football equipment that belongs to the town truly entered to this uh be donated. Um, to this football league. Um, which I said it is available. Um, per, per statute. Uh, personal property and thirty thousand to be donated by the town manager. But in lieu of this being tied to a greater agreement, I think it'd be more appropriate for the board to make this decision. Um. It. Uh, the statute that allows us to do that in this situation is available with what do it depending on. Uh, it says that the town leader will donate to make the any equipment, the curriculums. Six fifth um by a resolution of the board if, if a proper notice is given that requires uh five days. Um. But that would also, that is for in this situation, um, which your Donald's organization would have to set up as a um registered nonprofit organization. I don't, I don't know if that's taking question off, but I think tonight we're looking forward. I guess some, some guidance uh seeking collection from the board, whether it's something the town should move forward with. Um, and negotiating with reading the documents and going through the donation partner. The. Later. Or. Or. Or not. What's the. What's. Equipment is just sitting there down in law courts. We don't do football anymore. Um, I think we should. I think I should work together and see if they could dial their contract ready. Not for either contract. And then assuming he's got his nonprofit status in order, some statute move forward with the uh. With the public notice and then move forward with the donation.
I have a question for William. Cause it is a legal question. Uh, William, do we move forward even if the nonprofit uh status is pending? But it does take an extensive amount of time. Sometimes you don't have to even get that by holding. So would there be any legal, the gallery's barring us from moving in here? And to that agree that uh. Me.
Yeah. Can you turn it up or something? I'm still having.
He's trying and it's hold on, William.
And it's hold on, William. Can you hear us now?
I can hear you. I'm having a hard time hearing anyone.
Hit you on speaker. The way the system is set up, it's a lot of times.
Quick question. If there's a fee. I like a registration fee. We play football more. Was that it? Say the.
Hey, I think this might work better.
Okay, William.
Yes, sir. My question was, uh, if Donald was. Is five oh one C three is pending? Would that stop us from going ahead and entering into this agreement? Because the five oh seven one C three is not overnight process. I don't worry. I do know that he had been working on it. So we could, we go ahead and enter uh enter into this agreement with this five oh one C three pending.
I think so. If I'm still having a hard time honestly, mayor, understanding, understanding you, but if maybe Kim could ask me the question or text it to me.
Okay, William, what um what they're, what the mayor is asking is can we go ahead, the town enter a contract with Donald Dunn's? If he does not have his five oh three C in place? The equipment, I know that we can enter a contract, you know, without the equipment. But with the in equip, equipment included, wouldn't he have to have his five oh three C in order for the town to donate it per the statute?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, but we, that doesn't prevent us from allowing him to use the facilities if the commissioners deem appropriate. But the equipment is where it would have to be um. Uh, what's the term? I can't think of the term right now. I'm not salvaged. What's the term?
Plus.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, they could let him uh. Use the field or or whatever, but we can't. Uh, donate talent, town assets to a private citizen. To generally, we can't.
Right? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, William.
I can see that if I'm in. To the soccer field or potential soccer field, we had a community meeting last year where a lot of kids connected. That was your dish from the correct, or Paul Braxton. They were talking about potentially using Bray Park as a method to practice their sport. Just whatever this contract is drawn up, it should include other potential uses for um other recreational units too. Just want to make sure the football team doesn't get like some sorts of access to the field on certain day. They may have to work out with these rec subsidies. Days to use like the reason. But that should be part of the contract as well.
Yeah.
In direction, you're in low time. I don't think we've attached soccer field to football field. That that's who who determines that I don't know how they are tied together.
Why not usually?
Excuse me. Uh, I'm not. Uh, what we had discussed and has been discussed somewhere is the field beside Land of Solid Park that's just sitting there. Be drawn out, be drawn up, be fixed up or nothing but soccer. So we are looking at giving them an exclusive field at some point. Just got to get that particular part done. It's not, I mean, I don't see where it's a lot of money. Measure out, line it all, put a couple of bleachers there and your nets.
Other goals, other goals at Bray Park, the soccer.
Yeah. And maybe none of them.
The ones that like all right, some movies.
Actually two fields, uh definitely pay two fields back. The one that all right, so strictly solid.
Okay. I'm not thinking.
Mayor.
Yes.
I would like for Tyler um to explain to during the winter months. Um, Donald did want to use, is this how you understood it, Tyler? The the baseball fields that are lit, the the grass part. So that would be part of, part of it as well, using the the rear of the baseball and softball fields that are lit.
For all the town, we do purpose fields that the town has. The only fields that are covered with light are the baseball fields. Um, so during when it gets dark in winter, um, they have been utilizing the outfield with the lights.
I actually thought that was going to be honest to you. You discussed that. Uh, and and I'm going to approach him, he come back with what I thought was a good solution, but this is a starting rate. We're helping them get going as much as humanly possible with them. At the end of the day, some point, we have the conversation with Donald that they would be a nominal or minimal cost. Well, especially the lights. And they get on solid footing. So I don't know, we we need to help them because the town has got. And this is something that we supply. That we are no longer supplying, so it's my mindset and I hope that that will be able to help you some people. Then we're talking about children, something that gives them access to uh space and talking about. Give them access to stuff that they're the last we have, but this we. So I hope that.
Well, I'm sorry, that's a tough question for Tyler. Is there any added capacity or responsibility to provide some rec to allow um? The you for the football program to use the field?
Uh, I don't believe so. The only thoughts that I would have is in the contract, I'd also see some some verbiage on who would be responsible. What party would be responsible for like line the fields? Because that could take some time. Um, for game friends. Um, and then as well, another thought is um, we we don't have any artificial turf. But um wherever there's an open field, they're being used year round all the time. So that grass does die very easily. And if you play on it too much, it's hard to manage that turf. Um. Just to know.
So let's spell that. Who would be responsible for?
We would, well, we would be in charge of the maintenance of the turf, yeah. So seeding. Fertilizing, winterizing. Letting it rest.
You not have, not providing insurance payout. We not providing newborn payout. And so I think it's a man.
Second question was about lobbying for me. Um.
They have their own insurance on the capital.
That should all be defined. So personally, I think if. I don't know if you need a motion, but just direction. To see work with Donald to give an agreement ready for review. And uh while that's going on, he can work on his nonprofit status and. Like the mayor said, he's just like, let them get going. And maybe someday they'll be beginning to chat and talk and then.
Does require a motion or a vote or are we good?
About being asked. Go ahead.
Hey, William. The mayor wants to know um if this requires a motion. For staff to get direction from the commissioners to begin the process of a contract with Donald Dunn's.
Oh, I would recommend motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Let the uh town staff uh move forward and working with Donald to get a. A permanent contract in line for all of you. Moving on to second that we the town can contract with Donald Dunn's and the. Respect with all the all the people that be known by sign by. All of those have a same mind. Three nine motion. Uh, pushing our policy. So what are the last two things you need to spread the track of? Um, what what's that? Question, you know. That will allow change in income vehicles for score law enforcement. Extend that to forty miles. The final statement pack that provides um fifty one, uh there's a highlighted section that is the post and. Um, it's not new. X is being removed, it's just an admission that's highlighted, but just for law enforcement, extend that to forty miles based on. Information that we have that that's becoming a bigger concern to law enforcement. Um, pretty.
Which will have a direct effect for our people.
It it's a common question that we get is you can't say it's a policy, how far is it? And this seems to be. You know, the sweet spot, but I think it's reasonable for us that we can afford and also effectively decree the thing.
One of the. It's just. So often the four are you the town? And there were other people on board. You have a lot of people on town that didn't understand why we're allowed to hit that company. So I do understand who knows it. Law enforcement. But it's, can you kind of explain it? To exactly yes, that vehicle is taken with the vehicle home.
Yeah, so so we're talking about taking vehicle home. I mean, that's like a moment, I'm moving forwards and I follow it to my head, but. Um, the direction is bound to have often callback responsibilities for them installing day to night. The things that may come up. Probably those parts built. And water to obtain.
So are they normally supervised?
They they can be, but not always. Sometimes we look for it. Sometimes it's somebody's own call. It might have been buried.
I'm just asking to clarify with questions.
No, everybody.
Obviously. Good luck. Questions back. Question.
What you got?
Make a motion to approve the revised recent non-profitable equipment vehicle. On our panel to allow police take on vehicles used to ten to forty miles effective April sixteenth, twenty four.
All right, so moving on to the second that law enforcement uh be able to use. All right, down here, take home. With a forty mile radius, all the they go there and be known by sign by.
All time.
All those have the same line, hearing none motion.
At seven point three. Handout related section seven is a option. No additional language being added, just right through to the highlight section. Um, including all the. Smash here. From the web. If we just be taking out a section applied to. Um, Chad County, other local government. If there's no direct. Uh, that there was already. Personally working for us and. Yeah, sometimes it is still a position. But I think that like the tantrum is a little bit and. I think we should move towards a. Situation we're working with the family now against the team, so.
Are you guys aware of what? This is about. Have this in front of you, I can't even.
No, that you just got it.
Well, let me explain something. Last year of sometimes maybe we'll go back. That was up to the policy that. Uh, we didn't know any fire. People with connections to Chad County. That was just up there. So. We're saying that's no longer the case, that doesn't make any sense. So it. Uh, we are in Chatham County and we do need to work closely with Chatham County. And let me give you a caveat that you may or may not know it and approaching and. Throw. There was a deal being made that. The county is paying the bulk. I'll be helping us pay anything. At twenty, it's a twenty percent. So basically, they're trying to be good neighbors. They're not trying to uh not embrace South City.
It's in the. It's contemplated they'll help us with the uh some of the issues with Sanford merger, so. They're trying to be good neighbors. This policy was adopted last year. Where we if uh we prohibited ourselves from hiring somebody. If that person had a relative working for the county. Um. It seems to be in retrospect, maybe. Uh, pretty. Then, had they're there. Uh, can't remember why we did it, but we did it. Uh, but I think if we, we together and works as one county. That we should probably take that out.
So that's the book of what we're trying. Some days hard. Yes. Go away from South City. We didn't got a reaction. We don't want it. We just trying to fix this. Any other questions?
They've been hired simultaneously, like would they work? We're not going to hire people who work simultaneously for the Chatham County.
No, no, that same individual can't be hired. But like, so what this would prevent is it says couldn't hire a relative of of individual. So if. Your cousin worked for Chatham County, you wouldn't be able to come work for us. So. Um. You know, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go out and try to suck people away and coach people. But, you know, if if we have an opening come up and. You know, just because your. Your niece is works in law enforcement, you've got a, you've got a background in. Parks and Rec, I mean, why can't you come work for us? So. Um. This forget it again, so. We we reviewed it, we looked at it, we felt that. It's time to kind of move forward as one town and pose the use for the class.
Can you have the questions back in seconds? Got motion.
Yes, that's what you're saying. Well, okay, that's the fact. So I'll make a motion that we. Uh, approve the adopted change um and revise the employment policy effective. Today, April sixteenth, and that we also insert the word for. Between financial analysts and human resource director.
We're moving on to the second that we adopt change uh employment policy. Going uh filters that may work for the town. Uh, see. And we add the word or uh within the language. All the they really to be known by sign by. The all those have the same height.
No.
It's been moved there and all. The motion. Yeah. His um same name. Uh, you like it spelt, it's found on that.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, so. The various disgusting companies that you were forcing for.
The various disgusting companies that were forcing for water project, I'm afraid of English, it's a lot of that, it's a lot of that. We're forced raining down industry, um, that's not something historically we have to do, the first B L T streets when we had festivals. We're gonna close the street for a few hours and treat the fixing, uh, you know, a water leak, but to close the street for that spending period of time is not something that ourselves or, or, or we'll have a, it's a knowing that it been done, you thought it was appropriate to bring it to the board to one, to make the board aware that that's a need by the time factor and also to get approval, that way it wasn't something that you got calls about later and you were unaware of, but it's, it's necessary to report a contract if you think, if you think there were, um.
Is there a way, um, that we can make this, uh, known? So people won't be, uh, wondering what's going on, the reason why, and possibly the timetable. Or say like our website, um, road closure, the stream, and a possible timetable.
So they can, you know, you got people who drive through there, we need some type of signs up for a detour to let the public know, and like, and where it says, I think it's good, I don't know how long, I think. Because it affects traffic, I know the work on third, first time I went through, oh, oh, sixty-four. But no, I'm not coming back to here. So I started coming in on new sixty-four, but I think we got.
For the temporary street closing.
The move by the second for a previous temporary street closure, all in favor, by the way, be done by sign about, all those have the same about. Three, nine motion.
I wanted to bring this out, um, this is probably something that we just kind of discussed, and we're moving some language from our code. This is a joint effort where we're working with the county to, um, provide an easement for communication equipment. And, um, I think it's gonna be a new thing for the county, so I think things like this should be highlighted and bringing out, because I'm opposed to like, bringing out, because I think it's a good thing that we're doing with it in conjunction with county to establish, um, service communications, um, I think Travis is familiar with it and he, he can probably input on this. If he shares my position, it's a good thing. Uh, the only thing I will say, um, you know, the lawyer's, um, there's no incident at any practice.
I, I think that's some question, is reblocking, is providing direct blocks, kind of down the other end.
That's, that'll be a property description for the, obviously we have to have that for the problem.
I agree, I think it's good for all of it.
Escape, escape of our range or schools, are connecting that school, are.
No, they're for, it's support for, uh, emergency operations, they run, uh, they run, they run near the school, consider, uh, center of the library, the park, emergency. So it is something that's gonna benefit the, the entire county, and I'm glad to be a part of it.
So. I make a motion to approve the utility use of, to authorize the town manager to execute these commitments that we need to get on.
Second, the move to the top of the second, that we need to a, these men, you know, telling for the father on the table, all and they know anything done by sign about.
Um, I don't.
Three, nine motion. Have to do for us.
Oh, it's very, um, so there are, uh, the, the, you know, alleged work section, wouldn't say six block three.
The wings are both first.
You won't have any food.
Yes, yes, sir, I was just, I was, that'll be a close session.
Okay.
We are working on, the county is working on the basketball court, um, resurfacing project, um, we've actually got an update on Washington Park project.
Basketball court or the tennis court?
I'm gonna get the tennis court, so we had it in this budget, had the, the basketball court resurfaced, that's a visible thing for the community, so we'll make sure you're aware of that. Uh, we're trying to do that for Washington, for new floor land or solid, uh, for those courts. Um, we had everything lined up, we have the work done for Washington, we're, we're running through one small talent that we can resolve with Landers Tyler, um, and working with, uh, Tyler and, and tech note, we discovered that part of our court is actually on another parcel, so we're working with the landlord, see if that's something we can carve out and, and, and it's something that, well, some feedback from the board on, is it, is it something that we're interested in just carving out the parts relative to the basketball court, which requires paying a little bit of money on survey, um, to partition that piece from the parcel or if it's something we listen to spend more money on to buy an entire, a decent parcel.
We talked about that, I want, you know, when we come up. Yeah, we can do something like that, or we're, we're getting this at.
We're gonna do that in Southwood School.
Yeah, we had to buy some land.
So this is, so the town is both with the property owners, and very willing to work for the town, um, but we see some guidance.
Can you list the figures on both of them?
Well, we can.
So the, if you're facing the court deliberately.
Yep, it's, it's not a small, it's a very small part of the, of the court, but I think we're gonna resurface it now real time, so it. Correct that.
What would be?
And if we could use about Florida, who was more advanced, I think you're saying.
So it's.
Would it be to the advantage of the terms like this, get more, so they could add to the park, right?
It would be, it just mattered the town won't spend the money, it was gonna cost more to apply the whole policy, so it's mad at the town most.
I mean, that's.
I, I agree. It just changed what we do about surveys, we're buying the whole parcel, we wouldn't have to do a survey, if we're separating it out, then.
You're, you're, you're standing wrong, obviously, for the full parcel, but we didn't, I don't think saving the survey.
I, I, yeah, I don't have a price for you right now, I just need some guidance. I, I didn't, I think our issue right now is we needed to know that the board was not interested in the whole parcel, and we noted all of this survey.
Well, I mean, this, in the future, we have some, well, they can, but. And I think that's something that would be advantageous to us, is.
Right, well, I'll, I'll come back with an update, and, and I know something helpful.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and chip the blade of work.
I hope it's not going to delay the work at all, just to have the schedules, and, and, it all, if the company is done, it's not, it's mostly you, but I'm not affecting a lot of the legacy of.
Now, I think that, probably we should give it out of school, they sound like, I don't know, so.
Last thing, we have gotten one point on tennis court, um, it's something that the county will work on.
Well, you know, I felt you about the way the tennis court was that now, I'm building, new court's down because we don't have so much property down.
Right.
And then, no one's taking, just build a new court, and it's still, it's just spending money every day. And we, and we could have taken for the tennis court is now, just stay in that playground, children has been people ready to go with the children throughout life.
Uh, I, I think that's a, a good option to conserve because the, all the fencing around the perimeter sport needs to be replaced, well, it's rusted down, you can see it's poor, and a lot of fencing at very far is residential fencing, so it's, it has a short life, and it's, I think it's past that at this point.
What's gonna get that, also, that also.
I, I can't. Yes.
When you did that, or who made all the calls with them, um, I suggest you go to Sanford, to Otis, Lane, Hall, and Lake, Lake, uh, wonderful courts, they've really got four pickleball courts, and they have pens, the planes that the balls, they're little, where they make that too, I think it's, it is. So they're laid out very well, so someone made one good.
Now, just coming on, we use a lot of the parks out of town, terraces, and they have those splash where y'all seen them last one. Water come up through the.
Splash pad.
Splash pad, uh, could y'all consider doing something like that with the tennis court that you're gonna do away with? Because that adds to the swimming pool. A lot, a lot of that is safety stuff when it comes to Cal Curry and stuff like that, it's very attractive to do.
They want those in mind, so.
Well, keep, keep in mind too, you know, the staffs work very hard, that's what we, we need to push them, the master plan, watching that. So we want to make sure that what you want is in the plan, and we also want you to look at all through and implement the plan, so we want to make sure those things that you can handle. Um, I also want to thank, thank those who are able to come out to the, uh, mutuals that we have and our consultant steward for coming and talking about the conference of landage plan, um, they were, that's very close to the goal, so, um, I told them actually everything was done except for the implementation and the, I'm told, haven't seen the implementation yet, but it's, I told you, it's been wrapped, and so we're, we're winding down that plan, and I have a chance to look at that, uh, at that document, um, it really charts a vision for where we need to go. You approved our strategic plan tonight, which starts according to the next year, which is critical, that, that landage plan goes far beyond just land use, it's, it's comprehensive plan, it, it, it gives us a vision for the next ten years, um, so we need to give that consider, serious consideration, at least take the time to read that, um, it's important to put it forward, obviously.
Uh, question regarding the, uh, the additional parcels that, that would be, um, not surveyed, but we purchased whole thing, how big is the parcel? Point eight thirty two. Okay, that's pretty small, that's all you. Those are all papers.
Uh, don't need comments.
I'm, 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 I like such a, I'm really walking in with Logan Park and, um, the kids really enjoy the, like, the pile, you know, getting ready to do the, um, feeling. And the kids are playing in that and, and using that and enjoy that, so that, then we think, what if we could have a sandbox type, um, for the kids to sit in and play with? Because that's what they're doing now, but this is, but they're planning hopefully in the water. Now feasible with that, what kind of liability is that?
The, the only issue with the sandbox is all the street cats and the.
I'm sorry, I didn't do that.
I will leave you that.
Bill, I'm just saying, they.
Actually, that's, uh, an issue with sand volleyball court as a, at, they are.
I just laughed at all that.
In the community forum, made a suggestion, that he wanted to follow up on tonight, which was about the water meter and using uh, water commissioners, like a little turn, you know, because and all our, and all our houses at the end of building cycle and to see exactly if they're gonna work the way that they should work, uh, as we are moving toward with the other game. Actually, I liked that idea when he made it, and I, I was almost, and just so, so if we could get those in around that, they those of us that would like sell them, I don't think it's me through. But I will be willing to, they want, and to end the building cycle, let's see what we're doing.
It's not something we're installing ourselves, it's from by contractors.
Yeah.
If, if they're able to do that before they do the full rollout, then it's all. It should be, and first you have a more recent update, it should be a quicker end of April, they're gonna roll out and replace all of them, and they said it should take two months for replacement.
Thank God they're not doing that, thank you. He's got like two weeks to us, yeah, I mean, I'm seriously not trying to be funny about that day, and every other day it's been two weeks, man. If they don't meet two weeks, uh, we need to look at something else, if there's another excuse, then we need to do something about it, it, it's for you, and Michelle, how long that, how long have you had?
The time for several months, probably in December, sign about right, that would be.
So when I got people on the ground, it's time, if they don't make two weeks, then you come back together and talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think part of it, that we, we received the meters, um, when they were available, because and there's, it's been such a supply shortage, it's always been the plan that after we receive the unit, they have to put the communication system in place for the tower to be able to read the meters.
Just finished that.
And that's, yeah, that's been completed, so that's, that's really where the delay is being, is putting that technology in place, not getting people here to the forward leader themselves.
Yeah, but it's still been two weeks, three, two weeks.
Yeah, exactly, are there any, um, time line, do you think those calls in the contract?
Um, I'm not sure, I've not heard of that contract, but.
Yes, uh, the mayor and I spoke last week, he was, um, going to get with everyone, we are looking at, we need to set a date in June. That's the earliest the bronze can come in, so the mayor and I were talking about looking at the, let's see, uh, the week of the eighteenth through the twenty-first, and possibly doing that, um, and Norma, you would be out of school, right, by that point, or nevermind, you, you were, you're, I'm sorry, but anyhow, doing something, um, possibly around ten AM, eleven AM in the morning, so it's not hot, and some type of a brunch item, but we just need to set a date so I can let the memorial company know.
I hope you see, I say, um, really felt it's either, and I'm gonna stand back with her because she is dealing still with some health issues, so I want her to say how and when, and I, I could, uh, for this, she's still a little prick.
Okay.
So I told her yesterday that that's what would happen, so I'm gonna get with her this week, and then I'll get right back to you.
Okay.
If we don't know that I have my time, then.
And I'll, and I'll text you that week, see.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll, 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 I'll make sure I'm here with her.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, Miss Burton. Yeah, we'll let you know if it coincides with the peace coming in.
Okay.
Uh, don't need comments, I, I, I do want to extend a thank you to, uh, Mr. Mason, because I, I, I see sometimes we go couldn't wait for the day, somebody in her hands here can say guys doing a really good job, or not, not too bad of a job, or whatever the time that we be, and he did that today, and I feel thank him for that, I want to thank those of you that came out again from the community forum. I want to thank those of you that came out again from the community forum. I met a couple of the ladies. Uh later on in downtown and I had simply walked downtown, downtown was dirty. The parts I could dump trash myself, I walked in such bad job. And I appreciated her comments and. Uh guys, every time you tell us something, we listen. Well, let me phrase that, every time you tell us something, I'm listening. I'm gonna have to be. And and so I did purposely go downtown to see. And she's prepared. Uh hopefully find things that that you can do right then. Try to get it done and so I can get the part. Stop the temperature, jack metals uh is on it. Supposed to get that area. Uh and keep sensible because this is our town. So I thank all of your comments, all of your concerns, you can't give a look on that. And if you don't tell us. You may never know. But you appreciate and do not think that you're making those a neat upset or kicking me out, I mean. Thank you again, Mr. Mason, thank you guys for coming out and being with us. Are there any other governing group comments before we go into the session?
Uh I just wanna again announce the litter sweep. Solid City Development Organization partnership with the solid city police department and uh the department of transportation. For next spring litter sweep. It uh runs for two weeks from April thirteenth. April twenty seventh. Uh we have project sites available, if you. Uh would like for us to help you choose a site, but we also allow you to choose your own sites. Also, please share the word, we have this week and next week. Uh to help clean up our town. Just as an individual or as a group, just let me know, uh we do have some supplies available.
Anytime of the day, I mean, I I was just being conducted by this.
Just let me know, hey, shoot me an email, uh hey, I wanna clean up this area, or hey, I cleaned up this area. Uh we just need to make sure that we can notify D O T to go pick up bags uh for that area.
Mission I had, so we have some tars in the branch, if you have any. Hook or something that can pull out tars. And pull them to the road where they can eventually be picked up, cause. Down around my mother's, I it looks like where it starts to fall net. And it all transcends uh. And her vicinity there, it's not washed over that my yard.
About a hub for like a, your garden hub?
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah, that would work. All right. The last we're gonna need to help, we're gonna be cleaning up, and I think my mayor's got some cleanup time done too, and so it looks like we're. All hitting or making ours should be due. Nothing else. Our entire attention, our requires our attention again, I want to thank each one of you coming out. And we will see you. Lunch session, come on back, doctor.
I'll try. I'll try, Billy.